Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we will call to order. Madam Deputy Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have quorum.
Okay, first up, we have Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Bohm, seconded by Counselor George, that the council resolve itself into the Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting to consider the following items: A, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, corporate strategic planning, organization structure update; and B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, 2017 performance review, and 2018 goals of the chief administrative officer.
Okay, please vote. And that carries. Oh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As the mayor of the city of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So we were just meeting in Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting. We discussed a couple of items: corporate strategic planning, structure update, and the 2017 performance review, and 2018 goals for the CAO. So I will ask for a motion to rise without reporting, please.
Before I read the motion, could I ask all councillors to ensure they're signed in, please? Moved by Deputy Mayor Bohm, seconded by Counselor George, that council rise from the Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting without reporting.
Please vote. And that carries. Next, we have approval of the added's. We have a report from Planning Committee, and we have a couple of miscellaneous motions and some communications. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Shell. Please vote. And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Deputy Mayor Bohm.
Your Worship, and through you, I, Ryan Bohm, relation to the city of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 1, Report Number 27, and Bylaw 5. As an employee of Utilities Kingston, it may be deemed to have pecuniary interest in this matter. Thank you.
Counselor Cannon.
Through you, I, Adam Cannon, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Report Number 23, Clause 6, as my spouse is employed at Homebase Housing.
Thank you. Are there any other declarations? Okay, seeing none. We will move on. We have no presentations tonight, we have no delegations, we have no briefings. Are there any petitions to present? Seeing none, we have no motions of congratulations, recognition, sympathy, condolences, and speedy recovery. We have no deferred motions. So we will move right to reports. First, we have Report Number 23 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Counselor Neal, that Report Number 23 from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
There are seven clauses. We have separated Number 6 for Counselor Cannon's pecuniary interest. Are there any other separations? Counselor Turner?
Yes, to separate Number 3.
Okay, seeing no other separation. First, vote on the balance of the items. So Clause 1, it's a rural-urban liaison advisory committee. Clause 2, a word of contract for construction services for the installation of sportsfield lighting at Shannon's Corners Park and La Salle Park. Clause 4, portable housing benefit pilot and rent supplement surplus. Clause 5, a word of contract to 2019 model-year tandem axle dual-stream rear-loading refuse packers. And Clause 7, food access KFLNA mobile markets pilot project. We will call the vote, please. And that carries. Clause 3, air service development, a word of contract for consulting. Counselor Turner?
Thank you, and through Mayor Patterson. I thank the staff for bringing this forward, and I'd like to say that I'm very happy to see this coming forward to council, and that it's really needed to see the market and look at the marketplace to further develop the airport. I also wanted to ask the airport manager or Commissioner Laje a little bit more about this, if they could explain exactly what this RFP plans to study in terms of the airport.
Through you. Mr. Reed, who's our airport manager, Rick Reed, sitting over to my left. He's met members of council, maybe not members of public. Mr. Reed developed the RFP, so I think what I'll do is I'll defer to Mr. Reed to explain the three aspects of the RFP and the deliverables that we'll get from the consulting firm on this.
Reed?
Through the mayor. We have a fantastic airport and a great opportunity here. It's just not being exploited. The last air services development study that was done was based on some information from 2011. Things have changed dramatically in the aviation world since that time. We have four ultra-low-cost carriers that have entered the market. This is something new to Canada, not new to the world, but to Canada. And they're looking for opportunities. They're not going to go head-to-head, of course, with Air Canada. WestJet has its own ultra-low-cost carrier, Swoop, which will be flying very shortly. We know, for example, that they'll be flying, they are using a hub in the west, Abbotsford. They'll be flying to Calgary, and to Edmonton, to Toronto, et cetera. But we have an opportunity here to help them penetrate the eastern market into Atlantic Canada, which they haven't done so far. For example, I'll just give you an example of what it can do in terms of competition. Swoop has announced that from Abbotsford to Edmonton, the airfare will be $18. That's the basic fare. Now, mind you, if you want to bring a bag, or you want to have some food, it's going to cost you a lot more than that. But we see opportunity here with the ultra-low-cost carriers, looking into this very large market that we have surrounding us between Montreal and Toronto, and trying to find a low-cost alternative to the Pierre-Elliott Trudeau Airport and the Pearson Airport. They are ultra-low-cost carriers, every penny counts, and they're determined to find an opportunity that matches their business plan. I think we have it, we just need to identify it. We need to show it off to these people. It's a wonderful opportunity. This study is going to identify the number of people who fly out of our community, not just Kingston, but our surrounding communities, where they go, why they do it, and then from there to develop business cases, which we can take to the carriers that they identify. They say, "Kingston, your business plan matches their business plan, let's go."
Great, thank you for the information. I look forward to the report and the RFP. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on Clause 3. And that carries. Clause 6, emergency shelter beds designated for women. We will call the vote, please. Oh, Counselor Neal?
Sorry, just a quick question of the Commissioner, if I might. I know that there was a concern with homebase housing in the past with the idea of potential intimidation or awkwardness of women accessing homebase housing. How has that been resolved?
Mr. Laban?
Through you, your worship. That's been resolved through a number of means. First of all, Elizabeth Frye, who currently operates the women's shelter, has been quite active in our decision-making process to recommend this to council, to fund the beds being moved to homebase housing. So they have been working with homebase housing staff to make sure that the transition occurs properly, and that the staff are going to be trained properly, and that the setup is what would be expected to make sure it's a safe environment for the women. The other thing is that certainly the number of clients being served, homebase housing, I think it's a little bit of a misnomer, that there are women who stay at homebase housing at all times. There were approximately 15, I believe, that stay on any given month at homebase housing, so it's not a unique circumstance. It's just a unique circumstance to make sure that women who are presenting with a certain situation get served properly, and that's what Elizabeth Frye has been working with homebase housing to make sure happens.
Counselor Shell?
Thank you, your worship. I have a question for you as well. It's just on the, I just, I was a little shocked at the total cost, and I saw the comparison, for example, with Elizabeth Frye, and everything makes sense in the report, but we're talking about six emergency shelter beds and the annual cost of $170,000. And I'm wondering, as a comparison, how much would it cost if we were investing in six beds in an affordable housing environment instead of a shelter environment? Just so we can compare the different streams and how much they cost us.
It's not a, through you, your worship, I'm not sure that's an easy comparison to make. Certainly, there's a capital cost to affordable housing, which typically is $150,000 to $170,000 a unit. But the ongoing subsidy costs would range in the $5,000 to $10,000 range per year, but that does not include any support costs, and that's the main cost. And what we have seen in the three years since Elizabeth Frye has operated the women's shelter is that they understand they need to be double-staffed to make this a safe situation for their staff and the people staying at that shelter. And that's why the cost, they had anticipated that they would have to essentially double the cost if they were going to continue to operate the shelter in that way. So I'm not sure that totally answers your question, but...
No, well, the takeaway, I guess, for the public is it's quite, because of the reasons you just mentioned, to have this service, although no one can argue with the necessity of it, this is the reason why we're kind of having to turn to different creative solutions to try to keep these beds available. So, you know, in that context, I'm in favor of the solution proposed, but just keep in mind that this is very expensive, and, you know, over time, if we can move towards permanent solutions, of course, it would be more sustainable in the long run, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we both call the vote on Clause 6? And that carries. Report Number 24 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Osannick, seconded by Counselor Stroud, that Report Number 24 from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted.
So there's just the one clause, Development Charges Rebate Program. Counselor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I did have questions earlier today, and the answers were really very helpful. I just realized I would ask about the waiving of the municipal land use planning fees. Is that a made-in-Kingston idea as well, to add to this?
Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, this is something that we identified as one of the option in terms of the city contribution to make our proposal as successful as possible.
That's really encouraging. And presume that if there are the affordable units, they would also be under the 20 years, the way the development rebate would be?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Any of the affordable housing that would be related to this, we would be looking for a 20-year commitment.
That's terrific that the city's jumped on that. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions or comments, we will call the vote on Clause 1. And that carries. Report Number 25 from Planning Committee.
I am pleased to present Report Number 25 from Planning Committee, duly moved and seconded. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Turner, that Report Number 25 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
So just to the one clause, approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment 14 North Bartlett and 644 Victoria Street. We will call the vote. And that carries. Report Number 26 from the Admin Policies Committee.
It's my honor and privilege to provide counsel with Report Number 26 from the Admin Policies Committee, duly moved and seconded.
Moved by Counselor Cannon, seconded by Counselor Shell, that Report Number 26 from the Administrative Policies Committee be received and adopted.
So there are two clauses. Clause 1 is municipal discounts. Deputy Mayor Bohm?
Thank you, your worship. And through you, basically, due to some of the discussions I've had with some of my colleagues around the table, and also some other discussions with members of the public, sorry, what I'd like to do here is ask some more information of staff. So basically, the number of individuals that would lose the discount, the number of those individuals that currently use the discount for city services, review various financial thresholds options for the discount program, and also have some more additional public outreach on these threshold options for this discount program and additional public education. So with that in mind, I have a motion to defer Report 26, Clause 1, which the clerk already has, so I'd like to put that on the floor.
Okay. So we have a motion to defer. Moved by Deputy Mayor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Neal. Thank you. Okay, so that is to defer to allow staff an opportunity to provide additional information as listed. Okay, Deputy Mayor Bohm, so the motion defers floor, but debate is only with respect to time or place?
This isn't debate, I'm just wondering whether the third clause is related to the first clause, that if we, like, for example, hypothetically, if we defer the first clause, what does that do to the third clause, which talks about age-based discounts?
So...
I think we need to have that sorted before we vote on the deferral.
So the motion to defer is to defer the entire clause?
Oh, sorry, so I misunderstood. So it's the, so all of Clause 1?
So it's the entire clause, yes. So it's not a single paragraph, it's the entire?
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And, okay. So as for the timeframe, I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Okay, any other respect to time or place? Counselor McLaren?
Hey, Ask Why, it's going to take a...
Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, a couple of things. One is, we are going to do some further review and run some different models in terms of what I'm seeing here, as far as sliding scales and options and financial implication. And then we will need to go back to the public. We would obviously try to avoid summertime or holidays in terms of reaching out to the public, but definitely, we heard that people want more involvement and ability to have conversation around this. We could probably make it for Q1 of 2009, but I want to make sure that we take all the time that we need to do this work thoroughly and bring back all the options to council.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, so we will call the vote then on the motion to defer. Please vote.
One more, please.
And that carries by a vote of 11 to 1. Okay, on to Clause 2, nuisance party bylaw. Any discussion? Counselor Stroud?
I'd ask staff for some input on, I've already had some conversations with staff about this, and I've also had some conversations with the member, the AMS Commissioner for Municipal Affairs, who represents the student government at Queen's. And I understand a lot of work's gone into this bylaw, and I've seen it sort of evolve over time as well. I just wanted to have staff maybe answer a couple of questions. For example, one of the key elements is who has the authority to enact the bylaw? And it says it in the bylaw, but I would just, maybe if you could sort of highlight that point, because I think that's a crucial aspect to how it is received. It needs to be, it's a powerful tool if enacted, and I just sort of wanted to hear sort of the rationale behind the reason for what's in the bylaw, as far as who can enact it.
Mr. McLean?
Through you, your worship. The bylaw states that the authority to declare a large social gathering to be a nuisance party to the chief of police or his or her designate. So operationally, in discussions with the Kingston Police, they have identified that that would be a sergeant level or higher. And how things would work is that officers responding to a scene would make an assessment and relay the information. They'll be looking for specific criteria or elements that would constitute or define a nuisance party. They would relay that information to the sergeant, who would either be at the scene or perhaps at the station. And then the sergeant would make the call, so to speak, as to whether the information met the definition of a nuisance party. Once the declaration is made that a social gathering is a nuisance party, then each officer would have the authority to issue orders to attendees at the party to disperse, and orders to the host of a party to cease the party. But it begins with the authority residing with the chief of police or his or her designate. And perhaps my colleague, Staff Sergeant Armstrong, can speak in more detail to that?
Certainly, the way it was described is the way we intend to roll out the authority according to the chief of police, and it will certainly be at the sergeant's level. I have been in conversations with our colleagues in London and Guelph as well to see how they rolled it out, and then we'll kind of take from their experience, because it's been enacted since 2012. So we'll take their experience and try not to reinvent the wheel and make it as successful as possible.
Great. So what we're hearing then, maybe it's obvious to me, but maybe you could point out, so within the absence of a nuisance party bylaw, officers have at their disposal small fines that they can levy to individuals for, things like open liquor and things like that, little fines like that, that clearly haven't been really much of a deterrent for this kind of large gathering. And is it correct, my impression, that this powerful tool with the much heftier fine associated, of course, used with discretion, would be a much stronger deterrent, in the opinion of the police force?
Mr. Armstrong?
I agree, this is definitely a good tool to have in our toolbag, in order to deal with some of the problems that we've seen traditionally. I think the discretion will be there, and business will, it'll be business as usual if the situation at hand deserves a liquor infraction ticket or just a common noise complaint. That's what we intend to do. Subject to the situation at hand, the risk involved, all the criteria that are met according to the bylaw, this new proposed bylaw, then we'll deal with that situation accordingly. But insofar as what we're doing at a day-to-day basis, it'll be business as usual.
Okay, I mean, it's, a large percentage of my constituents are in the area that are both affected by large parties that people would call nuisance, but also, you know, the ones that may be organizing and attending these parties also may be constituents of mine, so I have to look at it from all sides. I just wanted to bring to council's attention, in case you haven't read all of the clauses of the bylaw, on page 103, it has the definition of nuisance party, and it actually lists the things that might be triggers for it to be designated as such, things like damage to public or private property, obstruction of traffic, excessive sound, unauthorized open burning, or unauthorized fireworks, public fights, urination, things, you know, et cetera, et cetera. There's a lot there that sort of paint a picture of what kind of out-of-control gathering we're talking about. And that's important for two reasons, because without that clear definition, just a gathering in someone's backyard, like a barbecue with music playing, could, you could think, if you were a student, you might think this is, you know, meant to target that kind of behavior. But we already have the noise bylaw and the liquor laws of Ontario to deal with those things, as was said here. So this isn't going to apply to all situations, only in the extreme cases where a more powerful tool is needed. I started out quite skeptical on this, thinking it sounded quite draconian at the outset, but I've been convinced by talking to staff and by hearing the responses today, that this is a necessary tool. I also have the knowledge that the Queen's administration, the principal, has sent the letter, you've probably seen, he's in favor. The AMS is also in favor. That's the student government at Queen's. So with that knowledge, I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Turner?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor. I have a quick question here about the, how you get to the fines. So the minimum fine is about $500 with some surcharges, but then, if you could explain to the public how you would get up to the $10,000, that's the one that frightens me, that's a lot of money for a student to have to pay. So what would be the worst-case scenario that would get you to that $10,000 that I wouldn't want to get to? If someone could explain that.
Mr. McLean?
Through you, your worship. The $10,000 figure you're referring to, which is the maximum fine for a first offense for an individual rather than a corporation, that comes from the Municipal Act. Those fines are what we are inserting now into all our bylaws. Up until recently, we had a maximum of $5,000 under the Provincial Offenses Act, but Kingston, like many other municipalities in Ontario, are now using the maximum fines provided in the Municipal Act as of 2007. They're higher, and acknowledge that, obviously, $10,000 is a maximum. We don't ever envision that that kind of fine would be requested by our prosecutor in a scenario where we're prosecuting someone for the nuisance party bylaw. We spoke... We spoke, we speak in the report about the $500 set fine, and that's issued as a ticket on the spot to individuals. If we encounter someone who has received one or more of those tickets and that has not been sufficient to, to modify their behavior, then, as we do with prosecution under many other municipal bylaws, we can elect to go what's called Part III long-form summons. And that requires a person then to attend court, and it allows our municipal prosecutor to ask for a higher fine amount than what is provided for in a set fine. So we can envision a scenario where if we were ever to go Part III long-form summons, that route with an individual under this bylaw, that would be obviously asking for a fine higher than $500. And I don't want to get into too many details beyond that in terms of how much we would ask for. But I can, I feel safe in saying that we would never ask for the maximum. And likely that courts, courts would very rarely allow for a maximum fine. I think it would be a scenario where something very serious had happened and there was a history of, of offenses with an individual that you would be anywhere near that high fine amount. But it's there because it's higher than the, what's provided for under the Provincial Offenses Act.
Okay, for clarifying that, I appreciate.
Any, any other questions? Counselor Neal?
Just quickly, if I can. And my colleague from Sidneyham District, I'm sure, has had some of these complaints as well. A recurring problem sometimes is with people having a party on a rooftop, an unsecured rooftop. Is there an existing bylaw that covers that? If we shoo the people off of the roof, because it is a health and safety issue, and they proceed to go back on the roof, at some point, would that become recognized as a nuisance party?
Mr. McLean?
Through you, Your Worship. Yes, that, you'll notice that being on a roof that's not designed for occupancy is one of the elements in the definition of a nuisance party. And it's, it's there primarily because absent that, police have had limited ability to remove people from the roof. So the way it would work in the context of a nuisance party bylaw is that if persons were on the roof, let's say they were consuming alcohol, it was a dangerous situation, police could, once they declare a social gathering to be a nuisance party, and that would certainly be one of the criteria that they would use in factoring into their decision, then it would give them the authority to order those individuals to come down off the roof. If they are not cooperative in coming down off the roof in short order, they would be eligible for the, to be fined under the bylaw. And certainly, if they came down but then went back on the roof, that would also constitute a violation of the failure to comply clause. So it's, it's a, removal from the roof is part of persons being ordered to disperse from the scene of the party itself.
Thanks, Reashur. Thank you.
Counselor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I'm sort of very pleased to see this coming. Just to clarify, would it, does this sound right? There's a, a party that the people have, in the neighborhood, have phoned the police about. The police would generally come, tell them to break up the party for a variety of reasons. And then if they don't, and the police are called again, that's when the whole nuisance party sort of formula would kick in? That it's not something that the police would come like with a hammer and say, "We've declared you a nuisance and here's some tickets," but that there's going to be a step-by-step process? Does that sound about right?
So, through you, Mr. Mayor. In, in practice, police would arrive at, at the scene. They would make a determination through the chief of police or their designate, whether or not the social gathering was designated to be a nuisance party based on the definition in the bylaw. And if it was declared a nuisance party, police would issue an order for those in attendance to leave the nuisance party, as well as order that the nuisance party cease. So discretion would be used in terms of allowing people to clear out and for the nuisance party to cease. But if, if there was defiance in, in either of those respects, that's when a ticket could be issued.
Thank you. And, and if, if the party disperses and then it reforms, that's when tickets would likely be issued. You wouldn't want to have them leaving and coming back, as does happen at times.
Mr. Kuzma? Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
Yes, you're going to recognize you.
Thank you. So, so I noticed that, I think a key point is that this is not all that is targeting students either. So this is something that applies to all citizens. It's a code of conduct for the community, which I think is great. I, that being said, I, I can't help but notice the timing, because tonight we will be, if this passes, we'll be reading in the first two readings of the bylaw. Then the third bylaw will be read March the 6th. So this would be in place for St. Patrick's Day this year. Is that correct?
Through you, Mayor. So very unlikely that the short-form wording and the set fine would be approved by the Ministry of Attorney General prior to March 17th of this year. And as well, proactive education is a big part of, of this bylaw, an important piece of it. And we want to ensure that we have the time to work with neighborhood representatives and tenant representatives in the community to develop that education prior to the bylaw being enforced.
Okay, so I think that's a key to follow up on, is that I think the ultimate goal of this bylaw is not to have to use it. That ultimately, it can be used as a deterrent. And so I guess that's my question on that education component. Letting landlords, students, and everybody else know that this bylaw is going to be in place. So can you expand a little bit on exactly how we're going to get that message out so that people are aware and encouraged to try to, to discourage that behavior in, in the first place?
We, we have, in the course of researching and conducting public consultation for this bylaw, we have spoken to several stakeholders, and that was part of our discussion, was relaying that we want to come back to those stakeholders should council approve this bylaw. And work with them, work with the representatives from the Kingston Rental Property Association, for example. Work with the AMS and other student groups. Work with neighborhood associations to, to talk about what the best way is to communicate to their particular constituencies the details about the bylaw. And to your point, general deterrence that comes with certainly awareness of the significantly high set fine and the additional powers that the bylaw contains. We're, we're hoping that that, that information will act as a deterrent, but we're also not naive. We realize there will still be some large social gatherings occur, but then the participants will be aware of the risks of, of attending such a party. The hosts will be aware of the consequences, potential consequences of hosting such a party.
Thank you, Your Worship. I return the chair.
Thank you. Okay, we'll call the vote on clause two, please. And that carries. Okay, nothing under, oh. Sorry. Report number 27 from?
I'm pleased to present report number 27 from the Planning Committee duly moved and seconded. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Turner, that report number 27 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, there's just the one clause approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment 798 Riverview Way. Call the vote? And that carries. Okay, nothing under committee of the whole. There's one information report tender and contract awards subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of December 2017. We have no information reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business. We have a couple of motions. First, that the resignation of Jamie McKenzie Naish from Heritage Kingston be received with regret. Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor Hodgson. Please vote. And that carries. Number two, that notwithstanding section 3.1.4 subsection five of the Illumination of City Facilities policy, Kingston City Council approved the Illumination of City Hall and Springer Market Square on March 26th, 2018 for Epilepsy Awareness Month. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Ossanik, seconded by Counselor Osterhoff? Please vote. And that carries. Okay. We have no new motions. Are there any notices of motion? Sitting now, Mr. Clerk, ask for minutes, please.
Moved by Counselor Osterhoff, seconded by Counselor Neal, that the minutes of special city council meeting number 201806 held Tuesday, February 6th, 2018, and the minutes of city council meeting number 201807 held Tuesday, February 6th, 2018 be confirmed.
Please vote. And that carries. Okay, we have some tabling of documents and number of communications. Is there any other business? Mr. Clerk, ask for bylaws, please.
Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor Osterhoff, that bylaw five be given its first and second reading.
Please vote. That carries.
Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor Osterhoff, that bylaw five be given its third reading.
Please vote. That carries.
Counselor Bohm, you can return, please. Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor Osterhoff, that bylaws one, two, and four be given their first and second reading.
Please vote. That carries.
Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor Osterhoff, that bylaws two, three, and four be given their third reading.
Please vote. And that carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Deputy Mayor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Camden. Please vote.
One more, please.
And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.